We are on. We'd like to call this meeting to order and open the agenda for the Georgetown Planning Board, June 13th, 2018, meeting in Memorial Town Hall. We're on the third floor in the conference room. It's a few minutes after seven. We have a pretty light agenda tonight, minutes, couple vouchers, some correspondence, all of it out of town, and one planning office item. So we'll quickly go through the minutes and vouchers and correspondence and move on to the one planning office item. So minutes. Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the minutes of May 23rd, 2018, as presented, with corrections as may be necessary.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes for June 13th, for May 23rd, 2018, with corrections if required. Any discussion? No discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Done. All right. We have vouchers, three. Looking for some motions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented. Staples for 52-55, reimbursement 116-50, and legal ad for 189-38.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the three vouchers, one for staples in the amount of 52-55, one for travel reimbursement to town planner in the amount of $116.50, and one to North of Boston Media Group for legal advertising for $189.38. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. The travel was for three separate occasions, right?
Yeah.
Decided to drive as well as the two.
Yeah, they had to be hand-delivered. Even in today's day and age.
Are you the messenger?
Yeah. And one of them was a workshop, and I was only there for an hour, 10 minutes. I got out, and I was like, what?
Did you have a bicycle?
Any other discussion? I see no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous on the vouchers. Correspondence, any, there's five. One from Newbury, one from Newbury, one from Newbury, one from Raleigh, and another from Newbury. Any items to discuss?
Mr. Chairman, did we vote on the voucher for Eagle Tribune, the third one?
Yes. Yep, all three were part of that.
Oh, part of one motion. Okay, very good.
Yep.
Do we have anything to sign, Mr. Jim? We have signatures for that.
Yeah, everything will be in there. And they do have one other voucher item to bring up. Want me to wait until you through the correspondence?
Yeah, we'll go through the correspondence, and I'll come back to that.
Thank you.
Any items on the correspondence anyone wants to talk about? I'll set with correspondence then. John?
We got this, it's a MyMap bill from Merriam-Beck Valley Planning Commission, and it came in Monday. And it's for the amount of $1,800. And we verified this with Mary that it is an outstanding bill for this fiscal year.
Okay.
And I just wanted to also alert the board. Andrea and Mary were working very diligently, along with myself, on verifying all of our accounts. And because we are carrying with our service accounts salary, we will have a balance when all outstanding bills and salary adjustment is taken care of. At the end of the year, we'll have a balance in the planning board accounts of $561.94.
So it won't be enough to pay for Ecode?
No, but, you know, we're going to be working with the Board of Selectmen on that and taking care of that.
Were we thinking there was going to be a different balance?
Well, this $1,800 invoice that came from Merriam-Beck Valley, I thought everything was up to speed, and this came out of left field, and that's, it's not on our agenda.
Okay.
But if the board wanted to, we could vote on this one tonight, too.
What was the $1,800 for?
It's for the FY '18 annual parcel mapping contract.
How does the rest of the board feel about signing it tonight?
The build-out, was that part of our build-out?
Tonight, before July, yeah, before July 1st.
Yeah.
Yeah, she'll have to.
Yeah.
Makes it easier for Mary.
Andrea realized that you understand that, because otherwise, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. She'll have to, there's a term for it, I forget what it is.
Encumbered.
Encumber the funds for the year. Mr. Chairman, if you'll hear it, I'd like to make a motion to pay the invoice for the fiscal year '18 annual parcel mapping contract to Merriam-Beck Valley Planning Commission, $1,800.
Second. Motion has been made, and it has been seconded. For the amount of $1,800, Merriam-Beck Valley Planning Commission Annual Parcel Mapping Contract. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, so we'll sign that, and then we'll go to 13 Lakewood. Just wait till, we'll sign that, clear it up, and give us our full attention.
Hit your space badge, huh?
Here we go. Have to increase that timeout.
We'll make one note of the correspondence. Marijuana facility being proposed in Raleigh.
Yeah.
Everybody getting on the bandwagon.
It's coming.
Jumping on the bandwagon, baby.
So what we'll do is, John, you can give us a brief overview with Lakewood, and then we'll go to, and to the board.
Okay. This is our first application for a dock permit on one of the great ponds in Georgetown, and that being Rock Pond. And the applicant is here this evening to introduce himself to the board and to actually help educate us with this particular subject that the DEP has bestowed upon the planning board recently. We're around the quasi-hearing board for the DEP at the local level, along with the Conservation Commission. These permits also require local Conservation Commission review and recommendation to the DEP if there are any outstanding issues. And the issue with the planning board holding this hearing this evening, the board can choose after hearing from the applicant, and if we do have any correspondence received expressing any concerns with the dock, we could forward those comments to DEP. Choose to. We're not obligated to, but we can forward those. And that's explained in the staff report in the attachments that were included with the staff report. And Bruce has been reviewing the laws on this and will help us along with how we got to this point.
Sure.
Which I told him the board will find quite interesting, because, you know, it's all new to us, too.
So at a Mass Coalition of Lakes and Ponds meeting a couple of months ago.
If you could just introduce yourself for the record.
Bruce Freed, 13 Lakewood Drive, and I am applying for a general license certification, Chapter 91 with the Mass DEP. And as such, the planning board has to be notified and have a meeting, as well as the Conservation Commission, the Board of Selectmen, and the Harbor Master. The Harbor Master has already issued dock permit for this year, and I have a meeting with the Conservation Commission. It's the next one down, 6D 94.
It's this one?
Yeah. I have a meeting with Conservation Commission next week on a project, which we will cover this as well. And so really, what it is, is the DEP, the law says that any structure in a great pond or waterway where it has anything touching the bottom needs to be registered with the DEP and the state. So floating docks don't need to be, yet docks that have posts do need to be. My dock is not in that picture, but I can show you. And I had a picture, and it's a four-foot wide by 15-foot long gangway to an eight-by-10-foot dock, which is actually normal size for that pond, if not smaller than most. Some of them are longer or bigger. This replaced a dock that was approximately the same size from the previous owner that was in disrepair. We gave that away to someone that took it and repaired it and put it at the other side of the pond. But, you know, we're just trying to go through this and document it properly. The DEP said that nobody does, and they really want to get everybody in the state to start doing it. So we're being some of the first people to actually push this through and try to get approved. I've been working closely with the gentleman at the DEP in a couple of different departments to get everything aligned. I've paid all the fees, filled out all the paperwork. I've put the ad in the paper more than 30 days ago before this meeting as required, and I have the tear sheet basically telling people if they have any questions or issues to come to the planning board before this date within 30 days. I don't know if you've gotten any response or any nothing. I figured you probably wouldn't. Again, this is really, it's a, and we had the dock in the last two years before we knew, and some people at the DEP meeting were saying, gee, I've had my dock for 30 years. I didn't know it was illegal. And they said, well, we're not trying to get people, we're not trying to find people and make them take them out. We just want to get people to start registering them with the state. We just want to know what's in the great ponds and the waterways, and along the ocean as well. When you have a dock that has posts touching the ground, the bottom of the waterway, they want it registered. That's what the Chapter 91 is. So I'm just asking for, I guess, let's see, what does it say here? It says, "Planning Board, comply, if the proposed project complies with the eligibility criteria and applicable standards and conditions of the general license, a completed GL certification can serve as the statement." So as far as I know, we comply with everything. I do put the dock in a certain date in the summer, spring, and take it out by October 1st in the fall, which is what the Harbor Master requires in the town of Georgetown. And I've been diligent about that the last three years since we bought the house from Mr. Young.
So, thank you for being the first, I guess. Poor guy. Going to the board, anybody have any questions, concerns? Yeah, Eric?
No concern. I use the MyMap, and I measured out those others, and it looks like this is about 10 feet shorter than every other one that's there.
It actually is, probably a little bit smaller. We didn't really feel like we needed a huge dock. And the reason that I did it this way was because I get seasick. So if you're sitting, if you're sitting on a dock that's floating, and boats come by, you're going like this. And I've seen people grab for their drinks, and, you know, so we wanted one that was more solid to sit on. We want to sit out there and enjoy the pond.
Who in the DEP did you speak with? Do you have his name?
Michael Gervin is the gentleman. I actually have phone numbers as well somewhere. I can get that to you.
I have a basic question.
Good.
I'll finally answer. But, I mean, obviously, this is just for recreational purposes and not to generate any revenue.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it's just for our own personal use. Yeah, and that is actually one of the things that states in the 91 laws, is that it can't be used for.
For profit.
Yeah, commercial. That's a whole different story and different fees.
I have one more question. And you mentioned the Harbor Master.
Yes.
And where does the Harbor Master get, the Harbor Master's marching orders, authority?
Harbor Master works for the Police Department, so there's essentially three Harbor Masters. Chief Cudmore is essentially the default Harbor Master, and then Jeff French and Tyler DeShane, both officers, part-time officers with the Police Department here, the GPD.
They're the assistants that wrote the letter?
Yes. I believe Tyler DeShane wrote the permit this year.
I spoke with the chief this afternoon. He called me back, because when I picked up the packet, I left him a note to speak about it, because we knew nothing.
I know.
And so he called today, and there actually isn't any bylaw that we have. We don't have any regulations.
They don't find anything.
They really can't enforce anything until we do.
Yeah.
They have no teeth to do anything. They're just winging it by common sense. So he requested if we could consider, you know, coming up with a bylaw. And I suggested preferably, you know, the pond association should really be involved with that. And as far as the chief knew, they're, they've been only working on the herbicide.
That's right, the invasive species, the Rock Pond Association.
But that is, that is a good, you know, you want people that are living there to keep an eye on the monitoring, you know? It's, that would be the best.
Yeah.
It's for their own benefit. And so it would be probab, I'm guessing a general bylaw, but, you know, maybe Mike could give us better directions. It's really not a zoning issue or a planning issue.
Sounds almost like conservation, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, according, it was, I guess, at one time. But because we got this updated letter from the state, they're, like, giving us the overseer responsibility.
I'm wondering what they were thinking of when they made that determination. I'm sure they had a reason.
What would happen if we deny it? I'm not saying, you know, like, what would the scenario be?
There's no appeal. Absolutely no appeal.
There's no denial. This is totally, completely recommendation.
It's basically, as he has mentioned, that the person I spoke with was not Michael, but pretty much the same response. I think he was on the phone with me for about an hour. And it seems like they just want people to be aware that this is the process, some process has to be established, so that.
Somebody knows something.
And, you know, it's to protect, obviously, the great pond, because they own it, the state owns it. They're responsible for it.
Okay.
And the reason for the permit, which, you know, I questioned in depth, you know, given a permit for somebody that lives there. So he said that it's, the permit is entitled them to use it. It's not a freebie, but it's, that's how they go forward with it. And he could reply, if the Harbor Master was set up, he could apply through the Harbor Master to get a yearly permit.
Which is what I do. I get a yearly permit from the Harbor Master, which I will continue to do, but this is a 15-year permit from the state.
No, you don't have to. What I found out is, that's your option. If you go for the local every year, through the Harbor Master, it's a yearly permit, whatever the town wants to assess as the permit fee.
Yeah.
If you go through the state, it's $75, and it's good for 30 years. However, you have to register it on your deed when you get the final say.
Yes.
So that it's, you know, it's legal.
Yep, I have to go to the registry of deeds.
And you have to do it within a timeframe.
Yep.
Or else it's valid. It's not any good, and you'd have to start all over.
No, I plan on going through this process and being one of the first in the state to do it properly.
Bruce, so, so right now, the way it's set up is you become responsible for all of this, the person?
Yes.
You're getting no help from anyone, it's the homeowner?
That's right.
To figure it out?
That's right. I'm doing this, I'm blazing the trail, as they say.
And I, is it, can you point to me where in all of this it says what the planning board is required to do?
On page seven.
So.
It has planning board.
I don't know if I have, like, a page seven, but maybe I do.
At the very top, it says E certification. I'll probably go back. Actually, hold on. Got a packet for you right here that's got it.
I see an E.
Okay, please, that is big, and I just need to bring it.
So what it says is, "The applicant must submit to the planning board a statement and plan that includes the proposed use," this is for people, these are for people outside watching. "location, dimensions, and limits and mode of work to be performed, and describes the proposed project with sufficient detail for the planning board to determine if the proposed project complies with the eligibility criteria." Conservation Commission, and then it says the same thing for the Conservation Commission. It doesn't say, I mean, I'm even looking for where it says the planning board is to make a recommendation. It doesn't, I can't even find that.
Well, it just says.
Just says if there are comments.
Yeah, a general license would be the outcome. You know, a completed GL certification can serve as the statement from the planning board. You know, maybe it's just a statement that I came here and that we didn't have any objections? I don't know.
Well, on that letter that we did get, and I made sure I included page two this time, if you want me to, real quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's see, it's a short paragraph. "As described in the statute, local planning boards have a key role in licensing and permitting process, the process for Chapter 91. The Chapter 91 law gives planning boards the opportunity to review and provide input to Mass DEP for any Chapter 91 license or permit before it is issued. Now, under the new certification option, the planning board may elect to have a more significant role in the Chapter 91 licensing slash permitting process. This change gives the planning board the opportunity to provide input to Mass DEP if desired. Under the GLC option, that's a certification option, the applicant is required to send to your board a statement or copy of the completed self-certification form and a public notice describing their project. The applicant has done that. And therefore, your board will most likely receive copies of the GLCs, that's the self-certification forms, and public notices in upcoming months. As residential docks and peer owners pursue their self-certifications in time for the 2018 voting season, your board does not need to provide comments to Mass DEP on these projects unless there are specific relevant concerns you want to bring to our attention." That would be DEP.
They're looking for flags.
Thanks, thanks.
They're looking for a flag if there's a problem.
So, you could give that back to Bruce, thank you. So I, unless, unless the board has.
See, we don't need to even be involved in the process if the board didn't want to. But if we do, you know, we're the planning board of the town, and, you know, these are structural items that require a state license. A lot of people don't know about that.
Yeah.
But, you know, here, we have our first applicant, who is coming forward and going through the formal permitting process. And it's for our benefit. Now, now we know that, you know, people that want to permit, and as Tilly made mention of, it's, it's a 15-year permit that gets automatically reviewed after.
15 years, yeah, for, so it's good, it's 30 years, but it's 15 years and then a re-review.
So any dock owner of a great pond in Georgetown, as with all towns throughout the Commonwealth, if they want to formally permit that dock as state provisions require, and for a long period of time, up to 30 years, and have that dock as built into the deed of that particular property, sounds like a good thing to do, actually.
Well, you had to go to get a building permit, correct?
It's a selling feature.
No, not a building, not from the building inspector, no.
You didn't?
No, not for the dock. Didn't have to get a building permit. Conservation Commission has to approve it, though.
Did you check that with Les, the building inspector?
Well, I checked it with the Concom. I can ask Les.
Now, Les, it says specifically, if it's a peer subject to title conditions, then the building commissioner would have to issue a permit for that. But for great ponds, the building commissioner is not involved.
It would only be required for coastal structures.
Yeah.
This is a pond, not a coastal structure.
Conservation Commission reviews this also?
Yes.
It almost seems like it's more their purview than ours. I mean, I have no problem looking at it, but.
You can't take it to the state, I'm telling you. Go for it, if you think you can do that.
I think they're looking for two sets of eyes.
No, it's not a bad, it's not a bad idea. I'm not.
Two local boards looking at something.
Yeah, yeah.
If a flag's going to come up, one of them's going to flag it.
Well, does anybody have a flag?
I have no flag.
I don't think there are any flags here.
Tomorrow's flag day. I'll have a flag tomorrow.
The only, the only flag, and it's covered the bases, is the notification. You know, it doesn't, who reads the legal ads? You know? And, and if you, if you went ahead and you got the thing installed, and then you get flack from your neighbors, I mean, you don't want that kind of environment. You know, you want to get along with your neighbors. I would have thought they would have required, or maybe that could be something in the bylaw, you, you know, give a, give a copy of the legal ad to the neighbors, you know, around the pond.
Similar to when you do a project and you have to send out the green cards.
Sure.
The butter notification.
I was actually kind of surprised that you didn't have to, but they, they do require you to put the ad in the paper.
Yeah.
30 days before the planning board meeting, which I did.
Only one time.
But this would be, this would be over and above, just to, to keep it friendly, neighborhood friendly.
Like this, like this hearing is just like a semi-public hearing. I think they recognize that, you know, these are so commonplace, and they're a traditional thing that people have when they have shorefront property in great ponds. You know, it's more that they acknowledge that, hey, you should be allowed to have one of these particular structures on your property if you have shorefront, and nobody really should be able to stop you from doing that. And, yeah, they're verifying there is a structure, they have documentation for that through this permitting process. But as it says in the instructions, that there's no appeal to the DEP granting this. So nobody can appeal.
Whether they turn you down.
Yeah, they might not like it, but there's no appeal process.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't even sound like this rises to the level of hearing.
Right.
This is meeting.
It's not really a hearing, either.
Well, if somebody were trying to put in, like, a 40-foot pier to a big, huge, you know, put in something outrageous, then there would be something to talk about, right?
Well, that's interesting, you should mention the size, because who I was talking to from the DEP kept saying, anything over 300 feet, you would need a different. But then when I read the computer, it kept saying 600 feet, and I wondered, you know.
600 square feet.
And it's 300 square feet, is the other.
Yeah, you can only project out, was it 40 feet? You can project out from the high watermark? And then you have a floating dock, a swimming dock, they call it, that can be separated.
75 feet, you can set those out.
Yeah.
But you have to get a permit for that.
And who told you that?
Well, the DEP, but South West of Verde, my neighbor, actually has that permit to have a float 75 feet out in his deed. He's the only one.
They changed it, though.
I think it's 50 feet now.
He doesn't, but he can.
It's 50, yeah.
Yeah.
It's 50 feet now. And the whole idea is to make sure that that great pond, every great pond is navigable to the associated.
That mean-high watermark is, is a surveying issue.
Yeah.
Gosh, it gets complicated unnecessarily.
Well, they have, they, they do have a way, you know, DEP has evaluated where the high mean-watermark is, so that wouldn't be, you know, they, they do that.
No, they, no, not for each water body. That, that, that changes, they're all unique.
As the level, as the water goes down, up and down in the pond during the summer, those, you know, changes.
That changes, but I mean, the mean average, I mean, it's, it's, so, that's just a whole different conversation. I didn't mean to.
Yeah, but I still wouldn't even be close to the limits with this one.
Where there's no tide.
Mr. Chairman, as far as process is concerned, do we want to do something like send a letter, just saying that the board has no problem?
I don't, I don't think we need to.
We don't have to do anything.
45 days later, it's just proving that all.
I mean, it's in the minutes, right?
I was just going to say, if I can just send them a copy of the meeting minutes, say that it was reviewed, and then that's probably.
Well, the way he explained it to me is, you're going to go on the computer, and there's an application there.
Yes.
And there's all these boxes.
I got it, yep, I got it figured out, yep.
And put in all the information, and the box will click up if it's incorrect, or it's not acceptable.
Yes.
So they will tell you, you know, that, he says, it's as simple as that.
Yeah, I've been working with them every step of the way.
So after your. So, after you're done with the Concom, and you finish with us, then you just get on the computer?
I'll get on the computer, and I'll get on the phone with them at the same time and make sure I've got everything done right. And they've already cashed my checks, and they've already got all my applications.
You know your first name?
And they've gone, they've gone over all my applications, so they're just waiting for this. I've, I've sent them the tear sheet from the, the ad, they're just waiting for these meetings.
Would it, would it, would it be, would it be a clean way to do it on Harry's suggestion, which actually I think is a good one, where, where John would just say, you know, it was heard and such and such, and there were no comments?
Sure, that would be nice to have.
Then you have it on planning board.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have a letter, sure.
And it would just be, just a memo.
Yeah.
Just a one-liner.
Yep.
And when I, when I file everything at the Registry of Deeds, I'm gonna file a whole packet in there.
If you want.
To go look at, well, I, I think to be safe, I should, the application with all the paperwork, I'll, I'll file it all.
Then you won't lose it.
Right.
And make reference to the harbor masters' conditions.
So, Don is our harbor master?
Yeah. But he does have a reserve, I guess, to help out, you know, versus...
The guy wears more hats.
The letter that we had, we've got a letter here by the, by the...
I'll just attach that, because it does have the requirements.
So, I think we're all set.
Good.
Thank you for all of the work and helping and educate us.
Thanks, I, I hope that, that this, you know, brings other people to, to do this properly.
I think so.
You know.
It will avoid a lot of problems down the line.
Certainly from here on, hopefully.
We get it going, yeah. Are you active in the Pond Association?
I'm actually on the Bylaw Committee, the Rock Pond Bylaw Committee, that was created last year to look at bylaws due to the, the wake issues, people speeding around them.
That's great, yeah, that would be great, to, to get something.
Do you, do you have any conversation, I'm segueing here, with the connection between Rock Pond and then Penn Tucket, and because they have, the water, they're connected?
We really don't, but I do know that Penn Tucket is up for treatment next year by, who is it?
Sol.
Sol, yeah, what, Solitude. So, Rock Pond has been treated, it was treated two years ago for the milfoil.
Yeah.
And then treated again this year, multiple times, for fanwort and milfoil.
Really?
It came back a little bit, the milfoil, not, not too bad, but they're trying to get it really clean, and they've looked at, I know that they've looked at Penn Tucket Pond, and the paperwork is with the Conservation Commission to treat Penn Tucket Pond next year, because I know there's a lot of invasives in there, so they're gonna try to clean that up, too. You can actually, yeah, I don't know if you can see it by the, you can see the invasive, the stuff growing in Penn Tucket there.
I know Penn Tucket, like the back of my hand, and the, the invasives are just, they're everywhere.
Yeah, so, you know, you may just keep in mind that Conservation Commission is, is looking to approve a treatment plan for next year for Penn Tucket.
What does that do to the fishing, to the fish?
It doesn't affect it at all.
No, it doesn't.
Not at all?
Twenty-four hours. It's actually, the, the chemical that they use is actually approved for use in reservoirs.
Really?
Really.
Yeah, they basically say stay out of it for one day.
That's amazing.
Yes, it's green chemical.
Yeah.
But you can't go in it once, that day they do it.
No, and they treat it two different ways. One way is local treatments for little spots, they put tablets, and another way is they have a, a little thing that I think trolls around the pond and releases the stuff. So, two years ago, when it was bad, they did the trolling thing that went around and released the chemical, so it got the whole pond, and now they're treating locally by dropping the tablets on those areas, and they just dissolve and get the roots.
We've been doing that for over fifteen years, 'cause, you know, I started that.
Penn Tucket?
Penn Tucket, and we had a, we had a pond group for Penn Tucket, 'cause it was so bad, that we started pulling it, and then we realized that was ridiculous. And so, because the least little...
And harvesting, they call it, yeah.
The least little leaf that gets loose is another plant.
Yeah.
And so, but that's been fifteen years, and, and at that time, you had to do it every third year.
So, it's been more than fifteen years?
I know, probably.
Wow.
Two thousand and one, I think it was, two thousand and two?
What about ninety-five?
Ninety-five, okay.
There you go.
There you are.
All right, let's move on.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Georgetown.
John, did you have any, did anyone have any member or public concerns? I, I had one that I wanted to mention, but go ahead.
Yeah, I have this one, this relates to the East Main Street Park, and the status of that as a follow-up from our last meeting. Larry would be much more comfortable in being the planning board's inspecting engineer when, and if the project continues moving forward. He would, he felt it would be a conflict beyond the involvement he would like to be involved with if he put the bid out and, you know, helped with the contracting part of it. So, he feels that, you know, the rec department would be the proper entity to put the bid out and seek a contractor to finish the project.
So, what I think I heard you say was that Larry's just saying that he wants to be the inspecting agent, he wants to be...
Correct, yeah.
And what was the conflict of interest that I was hearing?
Well, if he was involved with...
Writing the contract?
Writing the contract.
Helping him with that?
Yeah.
And he's not doing it?
No, he doesn't want to do that.
So, who are they going to, 'cause that's the big piece.
Right.
That's what we need. We don't need an inspecting, we need a building.
You know, in, in the memo, to me, he expressed that, you know, that should be the responsibility of the park and rec.
No, it should, but this is what, okay, so this is what's got us into where we are today, and they need help. Has there been any dialogue with them about that? 'Cause I, my, my thinking was that Larry was going to be helping them with that, and if he's not, which sounds like new information, we need to find someone to help them.
Yeah, and it is new information, he just feels that would be a clear conflict of interest.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and he'd much, if he's going to play a role, he'd much rather be the inspecting engineer on being the board's consulting engineer on the project as it moves forward from here. He, he would much prefer doing that, and matter of fact, that's all he really wants to do. He doesn't want to be the, the engineer putting a bid contract out or a bid package for a contract, so...
Well, it's fine, too, let's find a consulting engineer and an inspection engineer.
So, can you, is this the park and rec writing it up, John?
So...
Yeah, but I don't think, you see, the problem is, he was not involved with the field inspection of that project. What needs to be done, in my opinion...
Oh, Larry, Larry wasn't involved?
No.
No.
What needs to be done at this point in time, I think, is that, you know, he, the park department has to realize whether or not they have the time, expertise necessary to finish the project, or if they're going to have to hire a consultant to help them do that.
Obviously, they're gonna have to hire a consultant, they can't put together a bid package.
Even, even if they have the time, they need to hire a consultant to help them.
Yeah.
That's why Larry would've been perfect for it.
Yeah.
In, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, I thought he would've been a good fit, yeah.
He'll bring it. Could also have been invaluable with the park and rec. All one-stop shopping.
Who's our other technical engineer that we use?
Dave Varga.
Dave Varga, is he retired now? Or do we just talk to B S C?
Have not heard from him in a while.
Yeah.
Maybe retired.
Number times. But B S C is the one that is behind, you know?
The thing about B S C, and it's, it's, it will be a challenge to find an individual at that firm, that large firm, that will give the kind of attention that Park and Rec needs, I think, but...
Yeah, Dave was perfect, 'cause he lived here.
Exactly.
You almost need a, you almost wanna find an engineer that lives here, because they care, not that they care anymore, but they have a vested interest.
Can, can you, I mean, I don't know how much of this we're supposed to be doing for Park and Rec.
Well, I, I did inform them of Larry's position on this, and I haven't gotten any feedback from them yet.
They're probably meeting right now, oh, I don't know, I didn't check it, I didn't check to see if they have a meeting.
Can we, could, could we recommend that they contact B S C and, and get someone from that office to help them with putting this together?
Because if not, they'll go with Gail, probably, they'll just go back to Gail.
Please don't go to Gail, please don't go back to Gail.
I agree, not to go back.
Downstairs.
No, we don't wanna waste any more money.
It's really not our decision.
True, but it's, I would not...
We certainly can do that.
Yeah.
I mean, you gotta learn from your mistakes.
Can you...
Sometimes your options are limited.
Can, can you contact them tomorrow and send them just a memo from, from the planning board saying, you know, I guess reiterating, Larry's not gonna do it, the planning board is strongly recommending you contact Gail, our other technical review agent, to help you put this package together?
Okay, not, B S C.
I mean, B S C, excuse me. Would that be fine, that memo like that?
I'm good with that, I mean...
Let's do that and see if that helps them and gets their attention.
Move forward, move forward.
Shall we have a vote on that? Because it appears to be the minutes are only for including votes, so, well, let's, let's...
A vote on...
To get B S C to recommend to the Park and Rec to get B S C.
Recommend to the Park and Rec that...
So, we have noted that we're, we...
So, I'm sure we can do that. A motion to authorize John to issue a memo to Park and Rec to notify them that Larry Graham will no longer be participating in their process, and we strongly recommend that they contact B S C for support.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thanks. So, anything else, John?
Uh, just one other thing on this topic, in a way. This is the grant application with all the language that goes along with it.
You look good with a little color, by the way.
Thank you. We're tied to this.
A little color?
Broke a sweat for this in the sun. It's not hard to do when you're down there.
That sounded like a nice trip.
Yeah, I'll tell you.
So, this thirty-some-odd-page document, thirty-three-page document is the grant application, P A R C, Park, and it is due on July twelfth, and it's very extensive in its nature. It does have a couple of rounds of funding each year that come up. When I did go to the workshop, upwards of eighty-five percent of the applying communities do get awarded grants, so it's, it's a high probability of acquiring this grant, and this is a perfect opportunity with this grant that is up to four hundred thousand dollars for small towns to receive for each project. And it's a reimbursement type of grant where the town would pay, and once the work's completed, the, the state would reimburse the town for the money expended. And this would be for the completion of the East Main Street Park. The, the issues with this, the park would have to be completed by the end of construction season, two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty. So, you know, two thousand twenty's probably the most realistic timeframe for completion, so, you know, to get this grant application in on time and all the paperwork completed, it's a July twelfth deadline, that has to be met.
Well, page nine's the killer.
Yeah.
The sample budget, you need a number, and that's where I was hoping Larry would, would chime in.
Yeah. I was, I was hoping, I, I was hoping, though, that the rec department would have that, that information.
Well, the trick to that is that it's on spreadsheets, but Larry would need to go in and check off what has and has not yet been completed, and that's where the engineer comes in, and teasing out that information, what's left, and updating those costs.
Yeah.
You know, the square foot cost and square yard costs, that needs to be brought up to speed from estimates from four years ago, five years ago, six years ago?
Here, here's my concern with this, as a standalone, I think it's great. My concern is that we start getting tied into this, and that the implementation of it ends up out of our control, out of our hands, and the town ends up being stuck with the bill because something didn't happen the way it was supposed to happen.
Yeah.
Actually, what would happen is, since we're using CPC funds to fund it...
Yeah.
What would happen is, this would end up being a reimbursement.
No, I know.
And it would only happen after the open space and recreation plan was completed anyway? So, that would have to come from Concom, that would have to be completed.
Now, is the open space plan...
Open space and recreation plan?
Yeah, that's completed?
I believe it's expired. It would have to be updated and submitted before they, we would get a check.
Yeah, there's specific language that affect in, in the...
This is, this is the same matrix for the open space, open space purchase grants, and we've done a couple of them.
Yeah.
It's reimbursement.
But, so I understand it's a reimbursement, but what happens if, what happens if CPC gets the money, pays for this project to be completed, built, done, and then there are all of these issues arise that need to be corrected?
That didn't comply to what the project...
That didn't comply to what we're supposed to, and, and it just goes awry. And then my concern is that when, if that were to happen again, the state would say, or the granting authority would say, "We're not giving you money for that project, it's not done the way it's supposed to be done," and then the town is stuck.
I think once you had, once you opened and you were completed, and people were using it, you're done. I mean, the same way, this board being the specific one, could be the ones to sign on.
But my concern is it may not even get open.
Right, if we were to keep it closed, you mean, planning board would say, "Nope, not ready," and we kept it closed?
Correct, if for some reason...
After spending...
After spending more money, something goes, you know, that, that, the technical...
This is why Larry would be the person to point out what needs to be done. That's the, that's the killer, that, by doing that, he keys in on what remains to be done, he can give us a number, that figure can then go, you know, in column E, and that's what we base the bid on.
So, do we waste anything by going ahead, at least in getting this application completed? I mean, have we, we, yeah, there's nothing...
There's a, there's a sample budget.
There's nothing, there's nothing that we're committed to by doing that, correct? Okay, so, I don't wanna, you know, wait, I don't wanna hold up his schedule for getting this submitted in time, but I'm not yet on board with following through with it.
I don't think we're gonna get the numbers together in time, anyway.
Well, there's a budget page on there, page twenty-four. And based on what we had approved, whatever is not done, which we did to get a check up list.
Uh, did we? I don't think, I, I think we got a, a hit list of, a number of things that weren't done, but I, I don't think it was whole and complete to the, to the level of bid document task.
You're telling me that...
It was just, there was just a...
There's nowhere here.
There was a verbal from the hip.
Yeah, and that's what we need, we need that, we need that spreadsheet level to say, "This is fifty percent, this was done seventy-five percent, this zero percent was done of this." So, you can extrapolate the costs and bring it out, you know, so much for square foot, so much for square yard, and then come up with the cost.
Well, I, trying to meet the deadline, we're getting this in June, and the deadline is July.
July fourth or something.
Based on that, don't you think that you can look past the plans and know what appears to not be done, just so that we get something in? Because quite frankly, my experience with grants is so many other communities are gonna do that, and if you, if you get turned down, which can happen easily, then the next time you apply, they'll know this is the second time they're doing it.
Well, we do the ball-pocket high.
That's what I think.
Ball-pocket high, and...
Did you look on this page, so it has the numbers right here?
No, but I've, I've seen these before, so...
Oh, okay, all right.
It's really close to the open space.
I would just check off a few, make four hundred thousand dollars, and send it. That's how I would do it.
Do you think, anybody approached Davis's name?
Dave Wagner, or Larry?
I'm sorry, Larry.
Larry Graham.
Um, that, can you at least help us a little bit?
I know John's been talking to him, he sounds like he, he needs to.
Sounds like he.
Didn't he do a little begging?
No, it's a conflict, he can't.
He can't.
He's got his, his company reputation on the line.
And he, he, that's what he wants to do and.
Yeah, he can't do it. He, it's not, he probably would like to, but you can't do the job that you've already.
Oh, no, I, I, I got that, yes.
Okay, yeah. How's that, what's your objection to that, John, what I'm thinking?
He's not the inspection engineer, there's no conflict.
No, I, you know, all I'm trying to do at this point in time is to see if, you know, realistically, can we complete this application? Yeah.
Yeah.
I, uh, 'cause it's a huge commitment, I, I still wanna talk to Mike Farrell about it tomorrow. I just wanna be able to put the, the group of people together necessary to get the information we need in a timely manner so that we can reach the deadline successfully.
You got, what, four weeks, four weeks, three?
Thirteenth, yeah. You know, otherwise.
Won't even have a contract signed with the consulting engineer, by the way.
Right, the only, the only other thing is that we could, you know.
Scrub.
We can, we can do it, this isn't a one-shot deal, they, they do this twice a year.
I, 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 I think, I think we start the process for the next go-around, that's my take, I don't think we're prepared for this.
I think, you know, they'll be in a much better shape to reorganize in an effort to complete the project in a manner, and then we'll have a schedule, and we'll be able to build everything that we need.
I'm not too confident that's gonna happen, because, that's, I don't see any light at the end of that tunnel.
Do they know, does Park and Rec know about this grant, possible grant to apply for it?
They prob, they probably do know of the grant, they do not know that, um, the town.
Is considering it.
Yeah. They probably know now, if they're watching.
I think they're downstairs, they're in the meeting.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, Robert, as you said earlier, I think we're, we're better off going for the, the next round, pulling everybody together, doing it right.
I, I, I think so, um, I, yeah, I, I, that's, that's my take on it.
Might be better for.
And use the time, use this month, use this month now.
CPC's gotta get in.
Use, use this time now, between now and the next time, to get the players together, get all the positions identified, and get the agent who's going to work with them on board, ready to go.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Now, on another note, can I continue on? We have successfully, Andrea and I, working together with all of the department heads that input, Pete, Steve, Board of Health, Debbie, we finished the MS four annual report for fourteen and fifteen, fifteen and sixteen, and we're working on sixteen and seventeen.
Good God.
Then we'll be up to speed, so we're.
Then we have the NOI.
Yeah, yeah, that's in October, though. And I've been in communication with the state, and, um, you know, we're, 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 we'll be alright, you know, we're just a little late to the ballgame, but we got, we're getting there.
That's great.
Yeah, so those two were signed by the Board of Selectmen and submitted, those two years, now we're doing.
That's great.
That's good news.
Alright.
So we're staying busy, and Andrea has been absolutely instrumental in getting this work done, so.
Alright, so, on, on, on that note.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about the future of the, of the planning department, you know, with, with the staff that's, that's in the planning office right now. And the segue from that is that, uh, met with the selectmen last night, and, uh, Monday night, and it was the second meeting of, on town roadway lighting. And the conclusion to the meeting was that the, um, the Georgetown Light Department is going to now work with the Georgetown Planning Board, and we are going to, um, in the immediate future, like next week, uh, deal with some existing conditions in terms of lights that need to be changed out. But then, shortly thereafter, we're then going to begin a process of putting together a prototype for, very well, a lot of towns could use it, it's really pretty exciting, for roadway lighting master planning, um, for coming up with a master plan for Georgetown. And to then, uh, bring it to the town, eh, in, um, next May, uh, and to hopefully get it approved next May, and, um, so that's, uh, gonna be something that, um, I'm gonna be heading up, and anyone is welcome to join me, um, you're open to it, um, but I will keep the board appraised as to how that goes. But, uh, the, I will say this, the selectmen recognize that the Georgetown Planning Board is, you know, our primary responsibility is, you know, can, the, the control of the, the, the look of this town and, and how it's developing, and, um, it's a big responsibility. We have the staff full-time now to do it, um, and I'm just pretty excited about it. So, great meeting and, um.
Uh, Parish Road was submitted today, too, so, um, can we talk about the summer schedule?
Yeah, vacation stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if people have their vacations down, I'll tell you mine.
So Parish Road, they, they submitted today, Nancy McCann being the attorney for the applicant. She suggested that if the meeting's late enough in July, um, to have the public hearing in July, Planning Board Public Hearing, uh, at the end of the hearing, um, the board choosing Larry Graham to do the consultant review of that plan, and then for that application be continued till the September meeting, uh, giving Larry Graham enough time to critique the plans, give us a peer review, and then have the plans revised accordingly, and have a response letter prepared by the applicant engineer, so that when we have a meeting in September, um, hopefully all of the outstanding engineering issues would be resolved for that second hearing.
They don't want to have the, his letter come along with, at the same time as the Planning Board gives their comments? 'Cause that sounds like, 'cause then Larry does his second review, then it comes back, and they've taken care of Larry's comments, but not the Planning Board's, and that, that's what they wanna do, so they'll be prepared to.
Yeah.
Take ours, and who knows what happens?
Right, but we'll have our public hearing in July on the application.
Only the first one?
Right, right, and that'll be continued.
Okay.
We'll, we'll open the special permit.
Right, well, this isn't a special permit, this is, um, this is a, we already gave this, we gave this special permit, this is a definitive OSRD application, so.
Which is not a special permit?
The special permit is already granted through the, um.
Yeah, we did that.
Yeah.
Right.
Concept plan.
But the definitive.
The concept plan is, is the special permit plan.
The concept plan, I, I'm, I'm not familiar with, uh, special permit on a concept plan.
Yeah, th, this is definitive OSRD.
Yeah.
Which is a special permit.
Yeah, that's, I think it's.
You guys can check it if you want, that language, but read through the ordinance again, the special permit is granted.
We granted it.
Yeah.
Correct, correct.
That's the, the, the concept plan, if, if successful, grants the applicant the special permit, they still have to come in with the definitive OSRD plan, and that's the confirmation for final approval, it's the same.
So the special permit will only count once they get this, once they get final approval?
Statutorily, it's the same thing as getting definitive subdivision approval, except it's definitive subdivision approval for an OSRD plan.
As long as it doesn't deviate from.
Step one to step two.
Right, right, it's a two-permit process.
As long as it doesn't deviate substantially.
That's what I thought would be.
As long as it doesn't deviate substantially from the special permit.
That's what I thought would, would have been reworded and corrected and modified for our zoning amendment, that's the area that I was looking for. It's very confusing, I mean, we keep asking about that every time, it's brought up.
Well, I, I'm gonna check the website, I'm gonna check the E code and see what it says.
Well, just think, we, we could probably modify it again for the fall, or next spring.
I think it needed a lot, yeah, that was the key, you know, like, to him, step one, step two, that's what I'm looking for. And I think that's what the developers, and that's, that's the quicker way to make things go smooth. And for an applicant to think that they're all done, they already got the permit?
No.
No, no, they, they're not.
Legally, legally, all they got from us was permission, that, that use is now permitted by special permit on that property.
Just, just the use, yeah.
So this is a three out of five decision?
Because it's not a subdivision now, she's, she's clearly.
Is it super majority, or is it three, three?
The special permit requires, the special permit requires a super majority.
But what is the definitive, what does the definitive OSRD require?
Majority, just as it, yeah.
But it's not a definite, it's not a subdivision. Remember? It's not a subdivision.
Then it's a definitive site plan.
And that's the difference.
Right, exactly.
Then it's a definitive site plan.
This is site plan approval.
That's right, it's a site plan approval.
Not, not every law, not, a lot of laws do not cover all the bases.
I know, but we better get this.
Gotta be dimpled.
How about we work with the applicants and make a really nice subdivision, a really nice place to live?
I, I think.
How's that sound, neighborhood, to make a neighborhood, how's that sound?
That appears, it, it has, that is a definite, um, goal and possibility, for sure.
There you go.
I agree.
I'd love to have, um, you know, thirty acres of trails.
In your back?
You know, that's tied into, what, forty more acres of open space.
So, Joanne, en, enjoy, um, these meetings, because, um, it, this is not the way it typically goes.
Run away while you can, run away now.
Vacation, so I'm gone for two weeks from the fourth of, in August, the fourth to a, I think it's the eighteenth, John, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Whatever that is.
Calendar up here. And does anybody else have any conflicting?
Yeah, I'm gonna be, uh, gone, uh, on the twenty-fifth of July. And, let's see. On the twelfth of September.
It's a great time to go. I thought you were gonna say, Bob, that you would not be available between July. For Labor Day!
I'm working on that one, too.
Now, that's a summer.
When would the meetings in July be?
Uh, let's, I, I would suggest the eighteenth rather than the eleventh, but now I got a couple of issues.
I'm not here the eighteenth.
Thought Rob, Rob's not there.
Oh, no, you said August fourth.
On August.
Oh, August, or through the eighteenth.
It's always on the bottom of the agenda.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Rob, this is the tentative.
I know, it's like every two weeks.
Fourth, June.
Okay.
So we don't really even need a meeting.
You wanna cancel, cancel?
In two weeks, right?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I, yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
Alright, now, do we wanna meet two, do we wanna meet two meetings, um, one in July and one in August? Is that what the plan would be? That's what typically would happen. I'm suggesting that the eighteenth of July, if we can have a quorum for the eighteenth of July.
I won't be here.
I won't be here either.
That's next week.
No, no, no.
No, July.
Oh, July, excuse me, okay.
That happened to me last week.
Yeah, okay.
But I was on vacation.
Oh, and I would put it between the two?
Yeah, so July eighteenth doesn't work, does eleventh work, July eleventh? That would be fine, 'cause we, we don't have anything on the twenty-seventh of June, we do not have anything other than correspondence on this.
Should I make a motion to cancel the June twenty-seventh meeting?
Uh, one, one sec, I'm just curious, why, why switch?
Oh, no, we're just saying, cancel our next meeting.
Oh, on that meeting, yeah, cancel, yes, please.
Yes, please.
The Ju, July twenty.
The July twenty, no, the June twenty-seventh. June twenty-seventh, June twenty-seventh, our next meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'm making a motion to cancel that.
Motion's been made and seconded to cancel our June twenty-seventh Planning Board meeting, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Then the next meeting would be the July eleventh?
Yeah.
You know what, we have so much time.
That's fine with me.
To figure it all out.
But, um, what, what that's not good for is the public hearing for sixty-six Parish Road. Now, the applicant's attorney and the applicant, they really don't care when we have that meeting, so if the eighteenth doesn't work, eleventh doesn't, we could have it on the, what would that be, the third?
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth.
Of July?
Yeah, twenty-fifth of July.
Is, but, but I thought I heard a lot of people weren't here on the twenty-fifth. Was there someone else that wasn't gonna be here on the twenty-fifth?
Well, as long as we have three.
And we have, it sounds like we have four.
I think I'll be here on the twenty-fifth.
If we have three, I mean.
Alright.
Twenty-fifth. Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, don't forget where we, we are. We're here, third floor.
So, so the meeting's gonna be on the twenty-fifth, the only meeting in July is on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah.
But not the eleventh?
Not the eleventh?
Oh, killing the eleventh?
I thought there's two.
Do we make a motion to kill that?
What we're trying to do is, is one in July and one in August.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
But we are canceling in June.
We canceled.
And we can't.
Cancelled, June's done.
Do, do you wanna hang on to eleventh of July, just in case you get an A and R or something? Tick tock, tick tock.
If, if we get an A and R.
Yeah.
That, that would, yeah, we'll, we'll do that tentatively.
Let's hold, good point, uh, hold on to the eleventh and then we can cancel it, coming into it, if we don't have any.
Okay, so.
Okay, if there's nothing that comes in. The other, the other thing is, um, you know, applicants are coming, thinking about it and getting all their paperwork together, and the marijuana issue, um, but they all first have to go through, um, the Board of Selectmen. And, um, you know, one of them is Healthy Farms, and, and they have to have the host agreement amended, so they have to do that first, and I went over this with their.
Have to make a payment sooner or later, too, don't they?
Yeah, well.
Well, that'd be nice.
But everybody that wants to apply for any one of the eight businesses allowed within the adult marijuana industry per statute, they all have to have a host agreement first according with the Board of Selectmen, then, and once they have all the state permits in place, then they can apply for a special permit slash site plan with the Planning Board. Mike Farrell and I, um, a week ago, Wednesday, attended, um, last Wednesday, uh, attended a seminar that was hosted by Merrimack Valley Planning Commission in Amesbury, um, with the Cannabis Commission, and, you know, it was very enlightening. You know, you, you think you know a lot about this stuff, but not when it becomes legal. You know, the, we, we got a lot out of it, both of us, and, um, it was well-attended by, um, many of the towns. Excellent. Many police officials were there, too.
I would think.
They're the ones that are dealing with this stuff on, you know, frontline basis.
I thought they would be, they would be, you know, more, uh, vocal.
But, um, you know, everybody is getting a better grasp, better understanding about it, you know, it is here, and, um, you know, it has to be officially and really dealt with from here on out.
Did you get any handouts that we can look at, that when you went?
No, you know what I can do, though, I can give you, um, all the email linkages.
Okay.
Okay.
Any free samples?
No.
I got one more.
I was listening, I was listening to the guys who are, uh, developing the beverages.
Oh, God.
They were on before me. That was fascinating.
Everything's infused, no?
Very professional. It was fascinating.
It really is.
No, they were, no, oh, they were very professional.
They were marketers, they weren't from sales.
I mean, they, they, they were great, they were great, they were right up my alley.
I have, I have one request, I had, uh, watched the zoning board with the, uh, transfer station hearing, and, um, communicated with the chairman, and he would like to, to have more input from the different boards to, to show up and give their insight about it, because I think, um, he's looking for some support, is my opinion of what.
That's, eh, that's for the, uh.
Transfer station.
New, uh, what, what, I don't know what you would call it, but new navigation inside there?
Well, the thing is, is that, uh, I, I, I told him, I says, "We can only address the use," which that's all the zoning board is supposed to address, and then we're gonna have a site approval. So we can't, we can't, um, address the, the issues, traffic and, you know, things that are pertinent to our decisions.
Plus, we can't be going into, uh, those kind of meetings and giving opinions of, "We think it's a good project, we don't think it's a good project," because that biases us prior to going into our own hearings.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you stick to the use, though, that's their responsibility. That's all you can really talk about, is, is, well, if, you know, I wanna make that clear, that if you do come to stick with the use period, that, because that's all the zoning board, they overlap, actually, sometimes I think these kind of hearings should be both boards at the same time, because they're so intermingled, I mean, like, you can't, every one of the board members have a question about traffic, and that's a big. Right, but, but it's still, it's still, uh, their category is, are you going to allow them to do it on the property? And that's what they have to key in on, what happens on that parcel?
Well, they have to decide yes or no.
We do the traffic.
To the use or no to the use, that's what they do, the Z B A.
Yeah.
And then at that point, if they decide yes, then it comes to us, if they decide no, then I would imagine at that point, they will, um, just have to do the mandated changes that were ordered by E V, without the expansion.
No.
So let's not get into, let's not get into the project like this right this point, though.[1766.05]
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
But no, but, very good, but, but what Tilly was, what I heard Tilly saying was that the ZBA is looking for other boards to show up and, and participate in their process.
So often, the departments in this town is, is, every, every department is a silo, even though we try to, to get inputs.
And it would be helpful to, to maybe sometimes work together on certain...
It, it would, the challenge is, the challenge is, is that it becomes another meeting.
Gets it.
And when you're already going to three meetings a night...
I mean, this is all volunteers, and...
It, it, it's hard.
Well, it's, it's the July one, Mrs. McKinnon is their lawyer as well, she's canceled the July, because she'll probably be at the July meeting of the zoning board for the transfer station instead of Parish Road, that's, that's how that came to be.
So, your motion?
Mr. Chairman, I did want to cut Tilly off, but...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, you can email your thoughts to them, I mean, if you can't show up.
I mean, just to be clear.
That's public record.
This planning board met its legal obligation in recommending to the ZBA on that project already, they have an official communication from this board.
On the, not on this.
Pointing out about the increased traffic and how that might be a problem.
We remember, this was, this was a long time ago, this was last year, but, you know, we're the ones that flagged, you know, hey, this is what they're doing, it's, it's a six-fold increase in what's going on there now, and, you know, we put that in writing and sent that to them.
We can only recommend that, I mean, if they don't do a traffic study on their own...
Send, send again around, because I only remember us recommending for the 40B.
No, 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 I'll, I'll send that letter out, that, they, they got a full, formal letter from this planning board in regard to that project, in what we were requested to do formally, so I'll send that letter.
I'm glad you reminded me of that.
Yeah, we haven't been sitting idle, not doing what we're supposed to do with that, we recommended to them.
I knew we had done something with that project.
We did what we had to do, now they have to do what they have to do.
It was last spring, basically, that happened.
They just have to do it.
Yeah, and, and they still have to come here, it's a site plan minimum, it may become a major.